Anthony DiMatto, City Council.
Terry Tenchelsky, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Assistant John Lavelle.
Mayor Ken Calkin, I'd like to point out that the two Daves are wearing matching ties tonight. Out of number one.
Approve of minutes.
And number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on December 8th, 2015.
Motion.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number two.
To tran- to tran- I'm sorry, consent calendar. There are three items. First is 2A, to make an additional appropriation of $102,378 within the special grants and donations fund for code enforcement funded by code enforcement revenue. 2B is to make an additional appropriation of $6,863 within the special grants and donations fund for the 2015 municipal recycling rewards grant program. And 2C is to make an additional appropriation of $1,794 within the special grants and donations fund for the library funded by donations.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number three.
To transfer $30,000 from the general fund to operating transfers out of special revenue.
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number four.
To make an additional appropriation of $64,483 within the general fund funded by trust revenue for the Parks Department.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number five.
To transfer $200,000 from the general fund contingency account to demolition for the demolition and abatement work at 76 South Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion.
I do have discussion on this item, Mayor. I'm just wondering, is this the building at the corner of Union and South that the city owns?
Yes, it is.
Okay, this had been on the real estate committee to possibly sell it. I just hadn't heard anything more about it.
The building official has deemed it unsafe and to be torn down.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number six.
To make an additional appropriation of $75,000 within the capital nonrecurring fund funded by sidewalk assessments.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number seven.
To make an additional appropriation of $75,000 within the LoSiP fund funded by a transfer in from the capital nonrecurring fund for the sidewalk replacement program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number eight.
To make an additional appropriation of $30,000 within the special grants and donations fund for the eight- for 894 Middle Street assessment.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number nine.
To transfer $18,875 within the general fund for BPSA salary upgrades. Second.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 10.
To transfer $109,428 from the general fund contingency account for an IRS payment.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. Can you explain, as part of the detail in our package, this is, this goes back to the problem we had in the fall that was surfaced.
Yeah.
The, I thought in our package is $185,000. Can we get an update from the controller as to the payment and how that's working out?
I didn't hear the question.
Glenn, the appropriations for $109,000, that is the amount that was originally due under the assessment that we got from the Treasury Department?
This is for the IRS.
IRS?
Yes.
And there was $185,000 due, and I was wondering if you can update us on how that's going. Why you asked for $109?
It would be a better position for Robin, who's been in immediate contact, I believe, even today, as latest today.
So, when the IRS agent came out in November, I believe, she had asked that we pay the $109,000. The civil penalty of $75,000, she felt would be waived, so she did not direct us to pay it at that time. Today, I notified Mayor Calkin. I did receive a call from the Taxpayers Advocacy. Let me just find my notes for a minute, excuse me. Oh, where should I put that? A taxpayer advocacy group, and they're working with us now to try to get the refund from Social Security for the overpayment of about $82,000. So, we paid that in the $109,000, we paid the $82,000, and now we're trying to get the money refunded back to us.
Yeah, I understand we're time barred from that. Is there an update? And what?
That's what we're working on right now with the taxpayer advocacy group. They basically advocate on our behalf, so we're working with them to, I have to file a 941X which will correct the information, and then that will force them to look at that and see if they can get a refund on that.
You force them?
Meaning, it'll show all the data. We've paid our federal taxes up to date, and now it will show there's an overpayment on the Social Security. So, on the bottom of the return, it will show that we've overpaid, and all that will be signed off by the city, and then they will take it from there and try to get a refund.
Are they giving you any, any idea as to how they get around the time bar issue?
No time yet. I just heard from them today on that. And then, they did seem optimistic that we would be able to get something back. They weren't sure if we'd get it all back or not, but they were hopeful. I feel like we're in good hands.
Would you be sure to come back next month and update us?
Sure.
Let me also add that Senator Murphy and Congressman Larson have been involved in this. I met with both of them, and...
You're gonna meet with them next week, right?
I'm gonna meet with them next week, and I'm gonna meet with Senator Murphy and Blumenthal next week in Washington, and we're in the process of scheduling one with Larson as well.
You know, I gotta tell you, this is a big deal for me because it's, you know, clearly the routines or whatever happened in your office, you know, we missed it, and it's a big number for the city. We don't get this money back. And there's no excuse, in my view.
You've addressed that issue in your office, right?
Yes, yes, we have. We've put new practices in place, so this will never happen again.
Well, you know, later on in the agenda, it's not an agenda, I don't, it's new business. We're gonna, you know, I know the, I read the audit this weekend. Audit was great, I thought. It was very well done. New auditors, I got a lot of questions, though, so maybe we can approach that later.
I'm gonna talk about it when I go back to the podium.
Then let's, I'll defer. Okay, thank you.
Can I add that? I believe during our next Board of Finance meeting, we will delve more into more detail. So, please, I extend a welcome to you, any council, any members of the public, to come to that meeting, and things you didn't think of asking might come forward at that time as well. But to address what Robin said, the Board of Finance has also asked for extra steps and extra review to avoid items like this in the future.
Well, you know, I, I wanna be clear because I, you know, I may be, I may have misinterpreted what was said last, last month, but I was under the impression that the new auditors are gonna make a report to this joint session, and then some, I thought, I heard it was only gonna go to Finance, and I'd really like to have them come here.
If the appointing authority is the Board of Finance.
Well, they're here.
And, yes, but it's the Board of Finance, not the Joint Board, and I don't have this problem with that.
The council is invited to come to the Board of Finance. Will we, will we have an opportunity to talk or ask questions of the auditor?
We have the chair.
What I would suggest, we can talk to them, but if you can't make that meeting, if
you forward any questions we have, we'll get you answers to those, but we can ask them if they're available. Part of the thing is the joint board meeting is very brief, and we expect to spend quite a bit of time talking and opening questions that would extend things. And we, we get a little anal in our questions, so just to put it mildly, because a lot of us just have that.
I'm a rookie, you know?
So, hopefully you can join us, but we will ask them if they could make an appearance if you need further.
No, I think it's great. As long as, I really would like the opportunity as a council member to, to ask questions at, during your forum.
Oh, during our presentation?
Yeah.
We will give you that opportunity.
Can't ask for anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing I just want to add was the Taxpayers Advocacy Office that contacted me today was brought about by the mayor contacting Senator Murphy and Congressman Larson's office. So, this group actually works for Congress but is paid by the IRS, so it is a very powerful group that is, you know, working with us now, so hopefully we'll get it resolved to our satisfaction.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you.
Any other questions on item number 10? Motion to approve.
Move it.
What was I, actually, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 11.
To adopt the following resolutions and to waive the reading of the resolutions but to incorporate full texts as part of the minutes. Radio communications system replacement project, LNP Hubble Elementary School roof replacement repointing project, Dennis Malone Aquatic Center HVAC replacement project, Downs Street Bridge replacement project design phase, and former Memorial Boulevard School restoration project.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Item number 12.
Your Honor, can we get a roll call on this as these are?
Roll call, starting at my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes, yes, motion passes. Item number 12.
I didn't get an opportunity to get my report. Is it, am I?
You're up now.
That's you, 12.
You're up now.
I came up a little prematurely then. Most of my thunder was stolen with regards to the questions on, on the audit, but our office did prepare the audit, and we're using the Bristol, new Bristol All Heart logo. I think it looks kind of nice, actually, and we've copied the same format with the budget document, which are online, so that'll be helpful to, to residents that want to see it and officials that want to see it. So, yes, the audit was complete, was our first year. We, it was a learning process for both sides. Took a little bit, little bit extra on effort on, I should say, a lot of extra effort on both sides, and we have not received as of yet the management letter that is addressed to the Board of Finance. When that happens, there's gonna be a conversation with me prior to that to talk over some of the issues from both sides, and then a management letter will be issued, will be addressed to the, to the Chair of the Board of Finance. There was a surplus this year continuing in our ongoing surpluses that we've had, roughly 790,000, but that was, once again, a managed surplus. The actual surplus was probably a couple million dollars, but we, we put money, as you saw in your agendas, into the sinking funds and the capital projects to pay cash next year rather than hit the mill rate. So, that's been a standard practice of ours, and it's worked to our benefit. One of the other things that has come in is the actuarial valuations that we receive annually, and in continuing past practice, police and fire are very well overfunded. However, the city is, has declined in part because of the bad fiscal calendar year we had in the, in the marketplace. We were 117% overfunded, we dropped to 113% overfunded, and that's, in my opinion, a little bit mild, mildly to dangerously low. I mean, it could only take three years and we would be under 100%, so I'm gonna recommend to the Board of Finance the, the amount that they've requested to, the annual contribution is 159,000. That's split among the general fund and several other funds, so the whole 159,000 does not hit the general fund. There's the sewer operating funds and, and other funds. However, on the Board of Education side, that's a large number. We've kind of forgiven them the last couple of years. I don't think we're in a position to, to do that a third year. The number is approaching 600,000. I believe it's 600,000.
Yeah, actually, no, you're 597,000.
Okay, 597 is their required contribution, in part is because they, they have hired new people, I, 'cause I asked the actuaries, and they said that's the majority of it when you hire somebody new when they're, they're in the beginning of their career, the, the cost, the actual determinations are much higher. So, we've got to, I've sent this information to the Board of Ed, Gary Franzey, and told him to include it in his budget, and then you can have a discussion on that when they make their presentation, but we, we can't no longer, you know, just put zeros in, it's not, it's not the right thing to do at this time. And we already covered the last item, we talked about the 26th, the auditors will be in. If you have questions, it'd be helpful, Dave and, and anyone else, if you can give me the questions in advance so they can come prepared, 'cause otherwise, then you usually get a lot of, well, I'll get back to you. I don't think you want that.
Through the chair, when's the meeting, Glenn?
26th.
26th.
6:30.
Last, last Tuesday of the month. So, they'll be here, they'll, they'll be prepared, but if you can give the questions in advance, that'd be very helpful.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Glenn, why wasn't the management letter prepared? Or was it just bad timing there?
Yes, it was, it was time, you know, they, we, we weren't too pleased with, with the timing of receiving this report. I mean, we usually get it a couple of days. The report has to be filed to the Office of Policy and Management by the close of the day on 12/31, which is New Year's Eve, and, you know, most offices are closing early, but I know the governor, in this particular case, he kept the offices open until the right time. Nevertheless, we didn't receive this document until shortly afternoon, and our offices closed at 12:15. We had to obviously put together the, the check and copies to the GFOA for the, for the award that goes along with this. It was, it was a little bit of last second. So, I'm gonna have a conversation with them, and I'm sure they have some issues with us that, you know, they want some information. We weren't used to the format that they wanted it. We, for 20 years, we did it in the, in the older format for the prior auditors, and they're a little bit different, but that's okay. We've both learned, and I think we'll, we'll go forward. But I haven't had any indication of anything that's gonna be in the management letter, so once I do and have a conversation with them, then I'll forward it to the, to the Chair of the Board of Finance, and she can direct me how she wants it distributed.
Glenn, I would like to be in your call of, or your meeting, when you meet with them, if I could, please.
Yeah, we'll put you in conference.
Anything else?
Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Any other business?
I, I do have one item through the chair. I know that coming up, and I haven't seen a schedule yet, but coming up, we'll be having workshops as we get ready for the budget season. They're obviously Board of Finance workshops. I've tried to attend those in the past, and the various department heads bring forth their budget and explain and answer questions as the Finance Board prepares to develop the budget for the coming year. I wanted to specifically ask if we could have a workshop dedicated to healthcare. I, I, most people know that, I feel this is a very important issue. It's probably over 10% of our budget. I don't have numbers in front of me, but it's a significant number, and I wanted to be able to ask questions about how the insurance numbers are created and who creates them and how they've changed over time, and I, I just wanted to have that opportunity and have the opportunity for any members of the public that wanted to ask questions as well. So, I just was wondering if we might be able to schedule in such a way that there'd be, shall we say, extra time for specifically questions on healthcare.
The Board of Finance has a subcommittee meeting, a subcommittee, the insurance subcommittee, and a lot of the discussion occurs at that point and then is brought to the, to the workshop. Those meetings can be attended by you.
I think they're generally like at 10:00 in the morning, though, and I was just looking for an opportunity for members of the public, too, to ask questions, and so I was just...
The other thing is, this is a negotiated item through union contracts, which we've, we've talked about every, every contract, and we're, we're working through now with two of our contracts that, one is negotiated and one is in, pending.
Well, I wasn't talking about, like, what share employees pay. I, I'm really talking about how much the city pays for insurance.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a, a issue for the Board of Finance. I think where you need to go is to the insurance subcommittee, to that group, and perhaps you could take a couple hours off from work and go talk in that group.
However, you know, what they, they do discuss and what they present is brought to one of our workshops. That workshop can go, it'll be an item that is thoroughly discussed at that time, and we will let you know which night that will be because we, we tend to follow pretty much the same kind of order that we have in the past.
Right.
We have not worked out the schedule yet with the Controller's Office, which we'll be doing in the next couple of weeks, but we will definitely let you know, and you have the opportunity to come. And if you have some questions, just as we allowed anybody who has questions regarding the audit, we will give you time to ask those at that point. It can be, it's, do we need to go into an extra workshop just for this item? At this point, probably not, but there's the opportunity to schedule more workshops as necessary, should we need to. So, we can keep that flexibility should you, there's, there be the need for more discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business?
I have a question. Who's on the insurance subcommittee?
John, who's on your committee? You're the Chair, right, of that committee, if I recall?
Mike and Jake are the committee members. Glenn, Robin, and...
Diane.
Diane Ferguson. All four tend to staff people.
Board of Ed.
And Gary Franzey.
Franzey.
Gary Franzey and Sam Galloway.
And do you, off the top of your head, know the next meeting date and time?
No, because we call them as needed. We just had a meeting a week and a half ago where we discussed some employee benefit package, but a lot of the meetings are also discussing liability insurance, driver education for our municipal employees, et cetera, so it's not just the benefit structure. We'll call, we'll call a meeting probably early February.
And they're properly noticed through the, the town clerk's office, so...
They're all posted. We have to have a meeting fairly soon because we need to establish a budget number for next year, so.
Okay.
And that, that comes out of a discussion at that, at that committee meeting.
Very good. Any other questions? Well, this is your meeting, I'm sorry.
We meet at mine 15:00 in the morning, actually.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions? Hearing not, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Council meeting will start at 7:10. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting, Tuesday, January 12th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Father before which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the council members to please introduce themselves.
This way?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, my far right, sorry.
Calvin Brown, District 1. Anthony DiMatto, District 1.
Jody Hillsgagney, District 2.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Mayor, Mayor Ken Calkin. Have a moment of silence for troops on active duty. Item number 1B.
Update of All Heart website.
Yes, if I could just take a minute to introduce. A number of years ago, it was decided that we needed a task force to create a marketing effort for the city of Bristol, and it was put together, and we've had some terrific meetings. We've met for a long time, and what I'd like to do tonight is introduce Mark Wellerizziak, who probably, none of you, doesn't need an introduction, but Mark is our brand manager for the city, and he's been given a limited amount of time tonight because what he wanted to do is make sure we introduce the tool that has been created that is going to be used to help market the city. And the big thing with this, when he finishes, is that we'd like each and every one of you to think of how you can use this tool and add more value to it so this can be, what we'd like this to be is the, the spoke thing for the, for the city. We would like this, anything that's gonna happen in the city, we want to go through this website. So, Mark, I don't want to take any more time up, I'd like to introduce and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Dave, and I was a little close, right? So, I wa, I want to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us today to speak about the, the accomplishments that we've had with the joint marketing partnership between the city and the chamber, these recent accomplishments, and also where we're gonna go in 2016. Also, as a marketing committee, we discussed that it's probably important for us to kind of restate the purpose of our initiative, and that's really to put the city in a good light, you know, to instill pride and excitement, awareness and interest in our community, ultimately to encourage community participation and economic development. So, the question was, how do we do that? And it's through awareness, and how do you create awareness? You need to build a foundation of materials and distribution channels to be able to espouse the positives, things that we have to offer in the community, things like brochures and maps and social media and web portals, which we'll discuss very shortly. Why do we want to do that? You know, why do we want to go through all this, to this effort? You know, we want to take the publishing power, really, back into our own hands, you know, because we know exactly how we want to tell our story. You know, throughout history, you kind of have to rely on other press and things to, to do your story justice, and sometimes they have a lot to cover, and sometimes they don't even get to your story or do it in the way in which you wish it was done. So, taking that publishing power through distribution is the way that we want to do that, and building content is how we want to do that. So, with that in mind, you'll get a good idea as far as how we want to frame Bristol in a positive light and really show authentically what we have to offer as a community through showing this video to yourselves. So, if we can dim the lights really quickly, I'd like to show you a quick two-minute video that was produced in-house at the Chamber of Commerce for Bristol.
Welcome to Bristol, nestled in the heart of Connecticut, just two hours from Boston, New York, and an hour from the shorelines. Bristol offers a unique New England experience.
Sitting tight with small-town vibe, you play no match.
Too low? As a community, we're rich with history, overflowing with passion and ripe with experiences to enjoy. Beyond the rolling hills of Connecticut, that's where you'll find the magic of Bristol.
With an incredible 700-plus acres of park systems.
Inspiring museums and cultural programs, and the oldest operating amusement park in North America.
Our arts and entertainment will color you convinced.
And local food and drink establishments to be excited, satisfied, and always savoring more.
Community events that leave a lasting memory.
We really do have it all.
Plus, we're a community that honors the brave.
A community that offers top-tier sports and recreation.
And world-class accommodations to suit every style.
But what if you wanted to stay even longer?
Well, there's neighborhoods to pair with any personality.
And places for all kinds of producers.
Top-rated school systems.
Ways to make an impact.
And plenty of places to worship.
So, whether you're vacationing...
Passing through.
Or staying a little longer.
Bring your heart to Bristol. Our heart is always open to your experiences. Bristol, Connecticut.
All heart.
You can clap, it's okay. Yeah, turn the lights on, please. So, I want to give props to Jordan DiUlio, a highly talented student and Bristol resident who put, you know, his, his heart into that effort. So, as you can see, having, having things to really talk about your community in a positive light, that can really generate a positive reaction in terms of people who want to come to the city and interact with it. Just a couple of quick stats, since we, since we launched that video to accompany the portal, it's gotten over 5,000 hits on YouTube, and since we direct uploaded it to Facebook last Thursday, it's received 25,000 hits and over 600 shares. Those of you who are familiar with Facebook, that is a lot. Facebook, that is a lot. So people are sharing it, not only people in Bristol, but also those who had lived here at one point, you know, and they're showing their pride in their community. So thirty thousand hits in total, these people have a better opinion and idea of what our community is all about. Now, getting to distribution and the portal, you know, there's lots of great events, organizations to join, you know, businesses to frequent in the town, but you have to kind of look in like a hundred different places and different social medias and websites to really get a good picture of what it is that we have to offer. So we thought to ourselves, why don't we really put this all in one area for people, very simple, straightforward. It's a streamlined path for people to become more aware in order to support the locality. So without further ado, I'd like to direct your attention also to the screen. I'm going to do a very quick, high-level view. I invite everybody to go to bristolallheart.com. This is a new website. We're soft-launched since a couple of weeks into December. And up here, it's probably really difficult for you to see, but there's four things primarily that we want the portal to focus on. It's things to do, the different events in town, Social Square, which is the positive stories of heart, programs, and things of that sort happening in the community, as well as the Civic Portal, which is the gateway for people to volunteer and make an impact in a positive way. This is sort of self-explanatory splash page, a place where, you know, people can view the video that we just saw, ways to interact with our social media, and to share the site with your friends. Obviously, you know, this is very important to share these things with the people in the community, but there is a tourism element to what it is that we do. So we want people to kind of see the pretty pictures in Bristol, and also have an opportunity to download the destination guide brochure that we had developed within the past few months. Things to do in Bristol, these are the static attractions in town, from your food and drink to thrills and fun, culture and entertainment. We really broke this down categorically based on people's moods and interests. So if you clicked into food and drink, quite simply, it's just an inventory of all the different food and drink in town. So you can literally go in and filter into farms, or cafes and bakeries, whatever it is that you're interested in. Moving on, events, a huge thing. We want this to be a centralized community calendar. Sometimes it's very difficult to get an idea of what it is that's going on in town. So you have here, on the homepage, on tap, these are events that are happening tonight or next. Bristol Eastern's having their annual fashion show tonight, for those interested. This week, just an event that we want to bring extra attention to that's happening in this week. Look forward, maybe a large event that we also want to put in front of people. Of course, you'll notice the map here of Bristol. You'll see geographically tagged are these events. We want to provide an extra layer for people to be incentivized to go to an event if it's right around the corner. If it's down the street or two minutes from you, why wouldn't you want to go and support it? And if you click it, we made this site very mobile-friendly, tablet and mobile-friendly. So if you clicked on the address in these different pop-ups, it'll route your directions from your smartphone or your tablet to the location. So there's no excuses now not to go to the duck race and other places. You like that, Cheryl? And then, obviously, you can go and dig into the many layers of the site, seeing all the different events. This community calendar here, this is just a quick burst. If you don't have the time to go through the entire site, all you got to do is click what's going on, you know, the week of January eleventh, and you have an idea of what's happening. You know, maybe you have family that's coming in to visit, and you say, hey, you know, what's going on the week of the eighteenth? Look how many things are going on in Bristol. This is what we want to make people aware of. Heartbeat Blog, just quite simply a section of the positive stories of heart, projects and programs that are occurring in the community. We want to inspire other people to really partake in the culture of heart, passion, and production married together. Chris Salz, fifteen-year-old with autism, had a holiday lights display and characters in his yard trying to get canned goods and clothing for those who need it. Great stories like that. Videos, self-explanatory, kind of a window into our social media channels. We have Facebook, but also Twitter, Instagram, Pinterest, Google Plus and the like. You'll see all over the site, sharing All Heart's story. We want this to be an interactive experience. You know, we don't want to dictate the content to people. We want people to share, you know, the things, the positive things they see in the community. Attraction Spotlight, just some things, you know, based on a weekly basis, we'll rotate in, an event of the week, a group of the week, attraction of the week, food and drink of the week. So in this case, Historical Society, Barnes Nature Center, Harvest Bakery. That is a high level of the site that I want to kind of walk through. Of course, there's a lot more to it, you know, so that'll be your homework tonight, is to go check it out and have fun with it. I just want to share some statistics. Since launching, we haven't had a significant media campaign behind the launch of the portal. It is soft because we're still optimizing for mobile responsiveness. So we didn't want to go too far into the advertising, but just organically for people who have the URL. Over thirty-three hundred hits so far, over twelve thousand page views. The average time that people are sitting on the site is over four minutes. That's important because, on average, most websites are less than one minute, and fifty-five percent of sites have people leave in less than twenty seconds. Social media is a major aspect to what we do. Obviously, we want the static portal for all the information to sit there in perpetuity for people to find it, but also, we have to go where people are. And that's highly important, right? And social media total, subscription ship across, you know, all the Facebook, Twitter, Google Plus, and all that, is twenty-two hundred in just over a month. And the reach, the combination of the videos, the posts, all these things that we're doing, we've reached a hundred and forty-four thousand people in about a month. And then add in the views of the video, and you have a hundred and seventy-four thousand plus who have seen it. And so I just want to share those stats because we're really seeing now that there is a return, there are eyes on Bristol in a positive manner. And just quickly, I want to talk about where we're going in 2016, now that we have developed, you know, the site and some of the materials from the ground level. Obviously, we want to maintain the portal and the social media and ensure it's fresh and interesting. We're designing a workflow right now to be able to handle that. It's a significant amount of time and effort, as you can imagine. We want to make sure that we do it justice. And also, I wanted to talk tonight about how do we, you know, get a return on investment. Well, we're starting to see that, but how do we get more return on investment? And Dave alluded to it. You know, the council, the folks in the audience right now, start sharing the site with your friends, with your family, with your constituents. It's very important. Also, in 2016, we're looking to work closely with the BDA, creating welcoming materials. We have, you know, the URL now to share with people. We have brochures. We're looking to create a one, two, you know, three-step, simple process for people looking to open a business, trying to become even more business-friendly. And Depot Square, that's a huge one. So we want to put some firepower behind making sure that we sell the project the way that it needs to be sold. And also, we have our eyes geared on a major event in 2016. And if everything goes right, then hopefully, that's something that everybody will be able to enjoy. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I know that was difficult to get all the information in, and I know, you know, we had an eight-minute time limit, and I hope we met that. But if not...
I probably broke it.
Hopefully, I'm invited back next time. As you can see, Mark is very passionate about this, and obviously, we all should be. It's our city. If we don't promote it, who's going to? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Mark, let me also say that the marketing committee and yourself have done an outstanding job with this website. It's unbelievable, and we have it also linked to the city, to our city website. And I second what Mark said, share it on your Facebook page. Let's get it out there.
Thank you for your support as well.
Okay. Item number C. Is anyone here from Fisher House or Kevin Creed? Oh, okay. Presentation of plaque to Parks Department. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Blair Creed. Attorney Creed has a law office here at ninety-nine North Street, right around the corner in Bristol, Connecticut. We're here to present this plaque to the Parks and Parks Department.
Ed.
Every year, we have a Bristol Half Marathon that we run here, and without them, we could not have been as successful as it has been and will continue to be.
Thank you very much.
Let's go over here and do a photo op.
Absolutely.
Ed put a tie on tonight, so he wants a photo op.
Yeah, Ed has a tie. It's not too often Ed has a tie on.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the mayor and council for inviting me here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming. Good night. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting on December eighth, 2015, and the special meeting on December seventeenth, 2015.
Move to accept.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Just under discussion, didn't we have a couple of special meetings, two or three?
There are, but they're actually in draft form.
Draft form? That's fine.
You had, the twenty-eighth was submitted to you, but I didn't put it on there because I thought you might need more time. And the thirtieth is going to be coming your way probably this week sometime.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Public participation. Derek Chizniewski. Did I get that right yet?
No.
Chizniewski. It's only been six years.
Yo, Derek.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Derek Chizniewski, Twenty-Fanway Avenue, for the record. Not to pile on on the marketing task force and the great job that they've done, but I just wanted to share a quick story. The other day, I was talking to someone about the new All Heart website and the video, and they said, man, you know, that video and that site, they really make Bristol look good. And I said, well, not really. It captures what Bristol looks like. It's just been so long for us to be able to find something that truly captures what Bristol's about. And that does. You know, it's not the police flatter, it's not the headlines that you hear. It's that. So kudos to all of you. I know it's been a long time coming, but you know, it's the chamber, Jim Albert and Mark Walerzyak and Dave. I know you've worked tirelessly on this. So congratulations, it looks great.
Thank you.
And just keep up that momentum. With that said, I also wanted to congratulate Councilman Brown. I heard you purchased a home, and that's a big milestone. And having another young professional in town that's, you know, laying some roots and investing here, that's commendable. And I congratulate you on that. I did hear that it's not in your district. So I just wanted to see if you could clarify what the arrangement is there. I know that you apparently had closed on your home this past fall. So I just wanted to give you a chance to kind of set the record straight on your situation, just so that, you know, the public doesn't feel that they're kind of duped, that they elected someone who was planning to not live in the district that you represent. So if you could just shed a little light on that, I'd really appreciate it. And on behalf of all your constituents too, I think they would appreciate kind of knowing what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want me to do that now, or under announcements?
On whatever you want to do. I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance. Because I'm getting phone calls, and I said, I'm not Calvin Brown, I can't answer for him. So I'd prefer if you could just kind of let everyone know.
Sure. And do we have anybody else under public participation?
Uh, two more.
All right. Why don't I do it under announcements?
Appreciate it. Right, thank you, guys. That's all.
Thank you. Sean Rust. Sean, you have two cameras now going?
Yes, I do.
You got to get you a press pass. You got to get you a press pass.
For a bigger battery, then I won't need two cameras. Good evening, Sean Rust, fifty-three Lancaster Road. I don't know if you guys are aware of what's going on at the Lyceum. Anybody know what's going on at the Lyceum tomorrow night? It's a public hearing, something called NEC Future, that's New England Corridor. And it's a joint effort between the USDOT and the Federal Railroad Administration. And what they're looking at is they're looking at a transit corridor from Washington, D.C. to Boston. There's actually three different proposals that they're looking at. One is a nine-billion-dollar proposal, which is just leaving everything the way it is, just maintaining the rail lines that we have. There's a second proposal that's going to cost between a hundred and sixteen and a hundred and twenty-one billion dollars. And the third proposal is going to cost between two hundred and fifty-eight and two hundred and ninety-three billion dollars. And that's happening at the Lyceum tomorrow night, between four and seven P.M. tomorrow afternoon. I also wanted to discuss something that's called Transportation 2040. It's a CRCOG publication. And in that publication, it describes operational costs of the CT Fast Track as requiring a twelve-to-fifteen-million-dollar-a-year subsidy from the state, which is very high amount, I feel. And the other half of the development that the governor is doing, which is probably holding Obama's wife's hand now, or she's patting him on the back, is affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. Basically, since Malloy's been elected, we spent nearly five hundred million dollars on affordable housing. One thousand seven hundred and ninety-five units in Bridgeport, two thousand two hundred and seventy-six units in Hartford, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-three units in New Haven, nine hundred and ninety-seven units in Waterbury, which costs fifty-six million dollars, and twenty-five hundred in eastern Connecticut. Basically, the other thing that I want to discuss has to do with the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Mayor, I know that you normally speak on behalf of the CCM when they call you, and most of the times, it has to do with fighting against unfunded mandates. What I found is the CCM usually represents the municipality when they advocate one way or the other, and that's why they call on the mayors. But in this instance, CCM released the publication, and it's called Regional Cooperation for More Viable Connecticut: The Sharing Economy Among Towns. And what this is going to do is, what they're asking the state to do is to foster regionalism. They want to empower the council of governments to make lane-use decisions on regionally significant projects, being that Depot Square is in a regional center. I'm very concerned that we might lose control of the development. So what I did was, I'm going to have a public forum next week, on Wednesday, the twentieth. It's going to be at the library in the meeting room. I'd like to encourage any members of the council, if you care about what the residents think, not just what the members of the opposing party that weren't invited to wherever, care about what the residents think, the residents are going to want answers to what's going on in Depot Square. And if you could show up, send me an email on my website. It's on opengovernmentproject.com. There's a little link. You can email civics@opengovernmentproject.com. Let me know if you're going to be there. If you are, I will moderate it. I'm not going to let it be out of control, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean Lennon.
Sean Lennon, Bristol Firefighters Union, IAFF, Local 773, Mayor Coakine, members of the council. I stand before you tonight. There's an item on the agenda tonight, number fifteen, which speaks to the tentative agreement between the union that I represent, firefighters here in Bristol, and the city of Bristol. And behind me, there's a few folks standing there, and they're here all in support. And I just want to make a statement on if there were some people in the city that may have been betting against us, you and I, Mayor, in the last few months. And I actually want to commend the mayor and his team, and my team, for exemplary government on how we can come together and get a job done, even though we have a difference of opinion. And so I urge the council to support item number fifteen. We think it's a fair deal. And I think, you know, I, like I said, thank you, thank the team, specifically the mayor, the personnel director, Fire Chief Kalikowski. We're all involved, as well as my team. And, you know, it's not, no one's a hundred percent happy, but it's government, and it's good government. And I want to thank you for that.
Sean, I want to appreciate you coming up and saying that. And we did have some heated moments, but we got it done. And heated moments are to be expected. So, thank you. Announcements, starting by far left.
None tonight.
Your Honor, I have two brief ones. First of all, I want to congratulate the Bristol Business Education Foundation and its leader, Janine Aldette, who's with us tonight. I always call her one of our BoT superstars. The Education Foundation raises money from individuals and businesses in town, and it funds grants that are put forth to it by educators, teachers in a classroom, and administrators. Last week, they had their funding meeting. They made nineteen grants for over fifteen thousand dollars. And the reason I want to congratulate them is, if you were to witness what happened at the meeting, the enthusiasm of the teachers and the administrators, the work that I'm sure goes on every day in a classroom, you'd both be encouraged by what you've seen, and you would have been proud of the work that I think these teachers are doing for the kids of Bristol. The second thing, last week, last month, I plugged The Taste of Bristol. It's a fundraiser by the West End Association. It's a great fundraiser for five dollars. There's a list of thirty-six local restaurants you can go to and get a discount if you purchase this. It helps the West End Association, that's doing such good work in the West End, and it helps our local restaurants. You know, during the campaign, a few people asked me, how do we get more restaurants in Bristol? And the answer is quite simple. You go and make them successful. And this is part of the plan, I think, by visiting our restaurants, make them successful, make others want to be part of that success, and that's how we grow. Let me also say, those are for sale in the mayor's office, as well as, who else has? They're available, I think, Jim, at this chamber, Chamber of Commerce, Southside Meat Market, and Hamlet and Sons right now.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. Thank you.
I have none right now.
Yes, I have a few. From the Parks and Rec Department, they wanted to let everyone know that their second winter youth program registration is now open, along with registration for Learn to Swim. Programs and classes are to begin the first week of February. Their annual Frozen Float Family Night will be held at the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center on Saturday, February sixth, from six to eight P.M. And that their LEAF pickup operation is complete. Phase two renovations to Muzzy Field will start next week. The ice rink is set up at Stock's Playground. The Bristol Tramps Sports Reunion Committee has recognized the Parks Department and will receive a Pay It Forward Award of one thousand dollars towards upcoming games the department provides to the citizens of Bristol. And that ceremony is scheduled for April eighth, and two others. I wanted to let everyone know, there's a community breakfast on January eighteenth in honor of Martin Luther King Day. This is at Bristol Eastern High School at eight A.M. Tickets are ten dollars each, and children are five dollars. And finally, the annual OM Show has held its auditions, but they are still looking for children ages five to eight. Rehearsals for the children begin in early February. They're going to be on a Sunday. This is the seventy-fifth show, put on by the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. It's directed by Ken Ferris and Mary Lynn Gagnon. If anyone needs any more information on that, or would like their children to audition, please contact Ken or Mary Lynn directly, or you can contact me, and I'll point you in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, just want to let everyone know that the two thousand sixteen Doubletree Bristol bridal escravaganza is going to be going on on January fifteenth, which is this Friday, starts at six P.M. It's going to feature designs by Bristol's very own Cathy Faber, as well as hors d'oeuvres, champagne, and weekend getaway raffles. So if those of you who are in the wedding mood, as have I, you should attend and see what we have to offer. Okay? Thanks.
Councilman?
All right. Bear with me, I'm getting over a cold, so I'll do the best that I can. The first announcement is, as I'm sure all of you are aware, tonight is President Obama's final... tonight is President Obama's final State of the Union address, scheduled for sometime roughly around 9:00 PM. So hopefully, I'll be able to get to watch it, but I definitely encourage everybody to do that, see what the agenda for the next year is gonna be. And on to the point brought up by Mr. Chenzeluski. Some of you know, well, now all of you know, thanks to that announcement. I did, I did buy a house recently. I was in the market for it last year, and I'll explain to you the situation. My family and I were going back and forth about whether or not January at this meeting was gonna be the time to talk about it, or February, we were leaning toward February, but that's okay, I can talk about it now. But it's bound to get a little bit personal, so I apologize if that makes anybody uncomfortable. But I'll tell you the story. So, most of you know that before I entered high school, my parents separated, ultimately ended up in a divorce, and that changed our family situation and our living situation to some degree. The house that I grew up in on Ivy Drive, my mother and my brother and I stayed in, and that's where we've lived. But in September or October of 2016, the financial support that our family unit has been receiving to be able to stay in that home will run out. So we were faced with a decision, well, what can we do to make sure that my mother has a place where she can live and be safe, and that's affordable for her, and a place for my brother to be as well? And so we started to explore these different options. It became clear that probably the best option for us was to purchase a two-family home, for me to purchase a two-family home, where my mother could live in a safe rent-controlled environment, because I would be the property owner, and I could therefore control the rent. So it would be affordable for her for the rest of her life. And we could just rent out the other unit to keep, you know, to cover the cost of the mortgage on that property. So that was the plan, and that I would stay at the Ivy Drive House through September of this upcoming year, try and work on it a little bit, get it ready to be sold, or whatever we could do, if I could, if I were in a position at that point, in terms of my career, to be able to afford to live there by myself, I could do that. But it's become clear to my family and I that that is probably not a possibility. So, over this past holiday, we spent a lot of time talking with one another, trying to figure out what the plan would be. And we've come to the decision, or at least very, very, very near the decision, that we'll probably be putting our Ivy Drive House on the market, and we'll probably be doing it soon. And, because I am still new in my career, and I'm not in the, frankly, I'm not in a financial place where I can buy a second home in the first district for me to live. I probably, frankly, can't even afford rent in an apartment in the first district. As you know, it just so happens that the first district of the city of Bristol, that Tony and I represent, is just not a lot of multifamily housing stock there. So it looks like eventually, probably later this year, I am gonna be placed out of the first district. And at that point, I'm sorry to say, especially to so many friends and supporters who I haven't been able to talk to one-on-one yet, and for that, you have my sincerest apologies. Something that I promised you was going to happen over the next couple of weeks. But regardless, when that house is sold, and I am no longer a legal resident of that district, I have no other choice but to resign my seat on the city council, which I will do, then, and not before then. It's been a difficult time for my family. But at the same time, at the same time, it's really actually a happy thing, because I know that we're all gonna be better off for it in the long run. And for those of you who have supported me in the past, I've got a feeling, it's because you know I'm somebody that tries to do the right thing, and I know that this is the right thing to do for my family. And family comes first, and that's something that everybody in this room knows. So, that's the story, I apologize, I know it's a personal sort of thing, and it's an uncomfortable thing to talk about in this sort of a venue, I know it is. So I apologize for that. But, you know, that's what happens when you're an elected official, that's the sort of thing that's out in public. So I'm glad we were able to talk about it. If anybody has any questions for me, I'll be around after the meeting, though, like I said, I would like to be back for the State of the Union, but I will be around to talk to you. And you can always call me, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, any other announcements? Item number five.
It's the consent calendar, and there are eight items. 5A is to place on file the new hire report for December 2015. 5B is the ordinance committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 4-5 Rooster's Penalty. 5C is to place on file the recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the sale of 312 Oakland Street, as the city has no apparent use for it. 5D is to authorize Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain or Acting Mayor to execute a contract with John Devaux Consulting LLC for $5,500 to prepare and submit a grant application for Drug-Free Communities Support Program with half the cost paid by the Board of Education. 5E is a request to defer sidewalks at 39 Business Park Drive, owned by Uniprop AM LLC, referred to the Board, refer to the Board of Education and Board of Public Works for Review to approve, 5F is to approve the tax assessment freeze application for ROJ Recycling LLC for 409 Broad Street Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of a commercial building structure for Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. 5G is to authorize the Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain or Acting Mayor to sign any and all documents associated with the submission of industrial storm water discharge permit applications at Department of Public Works facilities. And 5H is to authorize the Mayor Kenneth B. Cockain or Acting Mayor to sign any and all documents associated with the submittal of the 2015 Annual Report required by general permit for the discharge of storm water from small municipal separate storm sewer systems, MS4.
Mayor, can I ask that we take D off the consent counter, please?
Any other one coming up? So can I have a motion to approve item A, B, C, E, F, G, H?
So moved.
Second?
Motion main, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number D.
With regard to D, your honor, I'm just concerned that we're hiring a consulting company to do a grant application when we have a grant writer employed by the city. I just, I'm not understanding that expenditure, you know, why it's necessary, I guess. I mean, obviously, the grant is, I'm assuming, important, but why a consultant is needed for that grant?
Eileen, do you want to speak to this? Eileen is our Youth Service Director.
Good evening. We were looking to hire a grant maker who is going to help facilitate us through a process, so it's not just writing the grant, it's actually gonna be helping us facilitate our coalition to develop our action plan, and then give us the narrative. It's a very short turnaround time to apply for the grant, and we do plan on asking the city's grant administrator to help us along with this project, and if we're not successful this year, to come up with a plan on how we can reapply in future years.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item D?
Yeah, your honor, can I just ask how much the potential grant would be? Just, just so it's on the record, that's all.
We can apply for up to $125,000 a year for five years, so a total of $600,000. And at the end of the five years, we would be eligible to apply for five more years. The person that we're looking to hire has written these grants before for a number of communities in Connecticut with a lot of success, and has mentored those communities.
Thanks. If I, I can just have one more question. Is that $5,500 per year, or $5,500 for all of the grants?
So one-time extended?
This is a one-time expenditure to help us make the grant and develop our action plan. We should be completed with this by the middle of March.
This is also not new appropriations, this came out of your budget, that's already budgeted for in the Board of Ed, right? In the Bristol Board of Ed, so this is not new money we're looking to spend, it's already been budgeted money.
Correct. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion main, seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number six, starting at my far left, reports.
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting, I'm the farthest left over here.
Yes, you are.
I don't have a specific committee report, but I, we talked about a motion in real estate. I just want to inquire of Melissa whether I should make that motion myself orally, or whether there is something? Okay. And I'm not trying to take the chair's position, but regarding the money that was paid for O'Connell and Bingham School, that motion we made at the end of our meeting in real estate? Okay, I'll make it, anyway. At our real estate committee meeting, we talked about the fact that the city took in funds for the purchase, in other words, entity has purchased O'Connell and Bingham Schools from the city. It's about $219,000, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but it's also money that was not in the budget. And we, the real estate committee, wanted to recommend that the council recommend to the Board of Finance that that money be put towards the Memorial Boulevard line item. In other words, towards future renovations of the Memorial Boulevard School for the Community Cultural Arts Center. Again, we understand it's a drop in the bucket in terms of the funds that will probably be needed for that project, but we just wanted to show our support by suggesting that those funds could be earmarked for that.
So is that a motion?
Motion to take the $219,000, or whatever the funds were received for O'Connell-Bingham School, and recommend that the Board of Finance earmark them to the Memorial Boulevard line item.
We have a second. Second. Motion main, seconded, discussion. Let me say that first, the city has shown support for the project, we've allocated $400,000. I believe we just hired an architect, Jody?
Yes.
Did we just do that, we just hired an architect, that project is moving forward. I think the council will be overstepping its bounds, it's the Board of Finance's job to allocate where the money goes, and I will not support this. Any other discussion? Roll call, starting at my far left, please.
Yes?
Your honor, this is, I have no idea what the detail is on this. It's not an agenda item, and I'm uncomfortable, without further discussion, these some analysis. Can we table this and talk about it again? I feel uncomfortable voting on something I have no knowledge of.
If you want to make a motion to table, you can.
It's simply a motion to ask the Board of Finance to consider putting the money towards that line item. It's not anything...
I'm in the middle of the vote, so, yes. No.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Your votes, no, motion passes. Anything else, any committee reports? Councilwoman Ford here.
None from me, thank you.
Mayor, briefly, you had sent over to the ordinance committee a request to look at the continuation of the Transportation Committee. We've invited some former committee members, some current committee members, who've shown some enthusiasm and some wherewithal. I'm meeting this week with Mr. Viselka and Mr. Weiner to discuss the issue, what it is and what it should be. It's, you know, economic development's such a big part of our agenda this year. So we're having another ordinance committee meeting on October, sorry, October, good lord, January 20 at 5:00 PM, if anybody has any input, and we'll report back next month.
Great, thank you. Councilman?
Yes, I have a brief report on school readiness. I've been on the School Readiness Committee for just two months now, but I asked them to send me a report on dollars and cents about how important preschool and school readiness programs are. And I'd just like to take a few moments, because it's this significant amount of money that the city of Bristol saves. The school readiness grant brings in $2.8 million into the Bristol community. The Quality Enhancement Grant brings in another $25,024. The grant, the Child Daycare Care Grant, CDC, which is overseen by the grant manager, brings in $429,832. A total of $3.3 million comes into the city to use for preschool programs, which is a significant amount of money. This means that 454 children in Bristol can receive a quality early care and education experience at no cost to the city. The Quality Enhancement Grant supports our library to provide quality events for young children, the Parent and Child Center to provide free parent workshops, our Family Resource Centers who work with home daycare providers to assure that they are quality. Because of the school readiness grant, Bristol Preschool Child Care Center was able to get a CHFA funding to open their West Street site, and then to get bonding in the award of $3.2 million for the newest site to be opened later this year at the former Jennings School. Imagination Museum of Early Learning received a CHFE grant, funds to renovate the building on Pleasant Street. This is economic development, funding going into our city and improving the physical structures of the childcare centers. These funds also allow the nonprofits and the Board of Education to employ teachers and support staff, many of whom are Bristol residents. And just as an aside, I'm sure all summer you probably saw signs around that said, "It's too late to wait, reading to your child at least 20 minutes a day." I was involved in this three-to-three program some number of years ago, and again, what they found is if you take just 20 minutes a day and read to a child, it'll enhance their ability to read when they get to school. Having a, someone that I know personally that's a kindergarten teacher, they have significant problems with people that enter school that aren't ready for school, and it costs additional monies to do that. So the benefit of preschool in Bristol is overwhelming, and I just wanted to let everybody know the significance, and I passed this out to everybody in the council before, so they have a good idea as to what we spend and what we get. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yes, from the Memorial Boulevard School Building Committee. First, I wanted to let everyone know that the Corporation for the Board had their first meeting, and they set their meeting schedule as the second Tuesday of the month, tonight, beginning in February. From 6:30 to 8:00, they're going to meet in the library, meeting room one. In addition, we have hired an architect, Smith Edwards McCoy. Everything should have been signed by the end of business today, yes, Roger? But we, we're talking at the meeting that the contract needs to be amended just slightly. The building itself could be eligible for historic tax credits. And if we take care of all the details of that now, we might be able to make sure we get approved for those tax credits later on. The tax credits would be approximately 25% of the approved capital outlay, so we don't know what exactly those tax credits will total at this point in time, but we're probably talking in the several million dollar range that we can use for the, for the building itself, which would be less money we'd have to raise in the end. But in order to make sure we're doing everything correct at this point, and to apply those tax credits down the road, we need to add the additional funds for the architect now. That would be an additional $39,000 for the architect fee. Now, the Board of Finance had approved $400,000 towards the design fee, and that went towards the architect and the construction manager. We have only appropriated $280,000 at this point in time, so the additional $39,000 would only bring us to $319,000. Therefore, we're still under what the Board of Finance has allocated for this project. So therefore, I move to amend the contract 2P 16-017, Engineering Architectural Services Relative to Renovations at Memorial Boulevard Community Cultural Center, with Smith Edwards McCoy Architects PC, in the amount of $39,000 for efforts relating to securing historic tax credits, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary to execute said amendment.
Second.
Motion main, seconded, discussion. Let me say that I think this is money well-spent in the beginning, even if we get a, you know, a fraction of the tax credits, it'll pay for the $39,000, so I think this was a good move. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anything else?
No.
Councilman?
I just want to bring everyone up to speed, just very quickly, on the ordinance committee that I sat on with both Councilman Will and Councilman Polaski. I'm very happy to report... I'm very happy to report that we're able to put the Rooster ordinance to bed. I just think... I just wanted to announce that just because I know previously in my seat, you know, Chairman Eric Carlson was working very hard on that, and I'd just like to put that out there that I'm happy that we were able to bring it to a close, and I'm sorry that he wasn't able to do it, but I'm happy we were able to do it. Something else that I just want to share of non-related with the motion to move the money that was just taken in with the two sales of the schools. I also want... I want to put it for the record that I'm in support of the Memorial Boulevard project, but I don't necessarily, and I don't mean to offend anyone, I understand what Councilwoman Ford is doing, but I don't appreciate getting thrown on my lap right at the council meeting. We haven't asked any other department within the city if they need the money or if the money needs to go somewhere else, and if it doesn't, I guess we can probably gladly bring a motion to do so and move the money to the Memorial Boulevard project. But I just don't... That's why I voted no. I love to see the money go there, but I'm not going to vote yes with a five-second introduction, okay? So, I just want to make that record straight. Thanks.
Councilman?
One quick one from the library, Your Honor. AARP Foundation Tax Aid Appointments are available free to Bristol taxpayers with low and moderate income, with special attention to those 60 and older, in the computer lab at Bristol Public Library, starting February 9th and continuing through April 12th. So, in the coming months, I'll continue to make that announcement as a reminder. And tax aid appointments are available Tuesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 in the afternoon. There will be no walk-ins. Appointments may be made by calling the library at 860-584-7787, extension 2000. Again, that's 860-584-7787. Free tax aid starting February 9th and continuing through April 12th. So, if you're a Bristol resident that could use that, it's a great success every year, and kudos to Debbie Prozo and the library for being able to provide that service to our constituents. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Unfinished business, starting from my far right.
One second. No, none for me.
None for me, Your Honor.
None.
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 Chair has none. New business, starting from my far left.
None.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask to present this motion for some work to be done over in 894 Middle Street. Was brought to me by Mr. Malley from the BDA. We'd like to ask a motion to enter into a contract with Nobus Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $37,693 for the completion of environmental assessments at 894 Middle Street, consistent with the requirements set forth by the EPA and the Connecticut DEEP, and to authorize the mayor or the acting mayor to sign any and all documents for said contract as necessary.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Can we just know what it's for?
Justin? Justin?
Hi there. We've been working on 894 Middle Street for years now. We own the property at this point. It's a contaminated property. We've gone through a Phase 1, a Phase 2, and most of a Phase 3. We brought what we had for a Phase 3 environmental assessment up to the state, and also talked with the federal government, and we need to complete a little more work. The Joint Board approved the funding for that just an hour ago, and this is now the contract to engage with the consultant and complete the work.
And the property, just for everybody else's identification, is where?
It's about 15 acres directly across from ESPN on Middle Street.
Is that the old Aviero?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else? No, thank you.
Nothing.
None.
None.
Chair has none. Resignations?
There are no resignations.
Appointments? To reappoint Paul Striderman, four-year term, to 121... I'm sorry, 120. January...
January 2020.
2020. Okay. Got it. Do you have the motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Paul, I think you're here. Congratulations. Board of Fire Commissioners, to reappoint Sean Moore, three-year term, to 119, and to reappoint Greg Belanger, Section 29... 2-9 resignation, unexpired term, to 119. Move it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Freedom of Information Advisory Board, to reappoint Teresa Farina, three-year term, to 119.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Bristol Historic District, to reappoint Stephen Vastola, five-year term, to 12021, and to reappoint Stephen Cohen, five-year term, to 12021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Bristol Board of Library Directors, to reappoint Pena Salvatore, three-year term, to 119, to reappoint Elizabeth Knauske, three-year term, to 119, to reappoint Donna Papagen, three-year term, to 119, and to reappoint Bonnie Ladevico, three-year term, to 119.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Planning Commission, to reappoint Anthony Del Arira, Section 219 resignation, unexpired term, to 73120.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Police Benevolent Fund, to reappoint Detective Scott Hayden, two-year term, to 118.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11.
Resolution regarding amendment to 2015-2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan with referral to Board of Finance, and there is a resolution to read?
I have it. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan of 215-216 to transfer $10,000 from residential rehabilitation to a single and reprogram these funds to the Bristol community organizations for a warming center coordinator, as approved by the Board of Bristol Development Authority at its December 21, 2015 meeting, is hereby approved. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. Resolution, starting from my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion passes. Item number 12.
Resolution regarding commitment of $9,375 in matching funds for Bristol Adult Education for grant through the Connecticut Department of Labor Office of Workforce Competitiveness to support AEDAC program, and there is a resolution to read?
Okay, read it.
I can do that if it... If my computer will cooperate. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to commit to providing matching funds in the amount of $9,375 for Bristol Adult Education to be eligible to receive a grant through the Connecticut Department of Labor Office of Workforce Competitiveness that will support the AEDAC program to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents associated with this partnership and to refer the matter to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say quickly, sort of my other hat outside of the City Council, what I do professionally, I'm associated with some of what's happening in workforce development in the state right now, and I actually have gotten a chance to work with Larry Covino a little bit through the Bristol Technical Advisory Council, led by the Chamber and the Main Street Community Foundation and others, and I've gotten to learn a little bit about this program, and I just have to give so much kudos to Mr. Covino and the folks associated with this EDAC program because this is the future of workforce development, and it's the way that we can bring people that may have slipped through the cracks before to a point where they can really build excellent in-demand careers for themselves and for their families. So, this is... Talk about someone to be proud of in Bristol. This is one of those things, so very exciting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, starting from my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion passes. Item number 13.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application up to $10,000 to the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, for federal fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant, and there is a resolution to read?
Okay, read it.
I'll read it.
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application of up to $10,000 to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the federal fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant funding is hereby approved, and that the Mayor Kenneth B. Cocaine or acting mayor is hereby authorized to enter into, deliver, and execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application/grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of this application/grant. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, vote, starting from my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion passes. Item 14.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application up to $25,000 with a city match of $2,500 to Federal Emergency Management Agency for Assistance to Firefighters Grant,